Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting, May 6, 2025. This meeting is hereby called "The Order." I need a roll call.
Councilman Lewis?
Here.
Councilman Bushnell?
Here.
Councilman Roberts?
Here.
Councilman Enman?
Here.
Councilman Burrell?
Here.
Councilman Bosford?
Here.
Councilman Verret?
Here. If you can all rise for a brief moment of silence and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And would our City Attorney Rod Rodriek please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of the republic, and to the very bottom of the Constitution, where we stand. I am a citizen of this country, and I am a patriot of the Constitution.
But we have no appearance this evening. We do have a consent calendar, our regular meeting minutes of April 1, 2025, and introduction of item number 2025-05-01, an ordinance of the City of Covington to amend the 2025 operating and capital budget. I need a motion to accept the consent calendar. Does that move? I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Bushnell?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Enman?
Yes.
Councilman Burrell?
Yes.
Councilman Bosford?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Under our regular agenda, unfinished business, items to be voted on, public hearing in action on item number 2025-04-01, an ordinance of the City of Covington authorizing the mayor to sell on behalf of the City of Covington a portion of Joiner Street located within the City of Covington, St. Tammany Parish, Louisiana. Councilman Bosford?
All right, basically, according to Public Works, we don't have any use for this. There's no sewer, there's no utilities running through it. And Mr. Rodriek informed me and gave me a little info on the backside of this that when they widened Collins Boulevard, they took 50 feet of this property, 50 by a little over 200 feet, and they're just trying to take Joiner Street and add that, put that 50 feet back into commerce. The other thing with that is that all throughout Joiner Street, it's revoked everywhere, all over the place, Circle K, everything, so we revoked that a long time ago. It's only this one little section, and it doesn't do the city any good or any other resident to access any of their property any good. So I would recommend allowing the mayor to go into the, to sell this piece of property.
City Attorney Rod, anything to add?
That's a correct reflection of what happened. The state expropriated a large portion of this square for the widening of Collins Boulevard 50 years ago. Basically, this little strip of property has been out of commerce because it's not deep enough to accommodate the necessary setback lines, parking, and landscaping requirements of zoning code. The petitioner owns this strip along Collins. He also owns a portion of the property behind Joiner Street that's requested to be revoked. And he owns, he has a purchase agreement and the consent of the other neighbor that owns the piece contiguous to Joiner Street. And what he hopes to do is incorporate, obviously, the revoked street into all of his properties, which will allow the construction of a commercial building.
And by and large, puts a piece of unusable property back in commerce.
Yes, because the strip, the strip that he owns along Collins Boulevard is not big enough to do anything with. It's the same thing that was done down by the Circle K, two squares down, Joiner Street bisected that square, it couldn't be used, and we revoked Joiner two blocks down.
Thank you, sir. Any public comment? Any further council comment? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Does that move? I need a second.
Second.
I need a motion to adopt. Does that move? And I also need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Enman?
Yes.
Councilman Burrell?
Yes.
Councilman Bosford?
Yes.
Councilman Verret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yeah.
Councilman Bushnell?
Yes.
Moving on, public hearing in action on item number 2025-04-02, an ordinance of the City of Covington authorizing the mayor to sell on behalf of the City of Covington a portion of the South America Street right-of-way in Favroville, also located in the City of Covington. Councilman Burrell?
Thank you. So I think most of you are familiar with where Favroville is, where South America dead end is, just past 16th. I think we have quite a few people who want to say something tonight, so I'm not going to say them their way.
All right. We asked everyone to fill out a card if they wanted to do so before the council meeting started, so we will go in order, and we will listen to everyone. We are asking that everyone limit their remarks to five minutes. If you look over at Councilman Roberts, he is going to be our timer, it'll be good. That's not what I was going to say, but that's a little more politically correct. And once he raises his hand, you'll have about 30 seconds. Okay? All right, fair enough. Would Mr. Paul Marone please come up? And as you come up, if you can give us your name and your address, we would appreciate it for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Paul Marone, PO Box 1810, Covington, Louisiana, 70434. And I represent Favroville LLC. The request before you this evening is for the city to sell a portion of the unopened right-of-way of South America Street to my clients, all in accordance with the provisions in your ordinances, in particular Article 4 of Section 86, where it specifically identifies this particular action for a sale of a right-of-way like this. This property that we're talking about is in fact an unopened right-of-way. There is not a street in this portion of the right-of-way, only a gravel driveway that was constructed by my clients to provide access to their homes. As we'll address in a little bit more detail tonight, we have issues out there that are safety issues and public safety issues, and they're very real, and we are dealing with those, and we ask you to take action tonight to help resolve those. Since this all began, there's a great deal of more traffic on this unopened right-of-way. We have people driving up and back the unopened right-of-way that presents a real danger to people, pets, and property. And that has only gotten worse and has exacerbated over these months. We also are dealing with incidents of vandalism in the area. So what has historically been a very quiet and tranquil area is anything but that today. You have the opportunity to take action tonight in concurring with your planning commission's recommendation to sell the right-of-way to resolve all of these issues, and we urge you to please do that this evening. Now, since we were for the planning commission, we understand that Mr. Frederick has filed his own request to purchase the right-of-way. It has been suggested that maybe this request should be delayed so that that request could catch up. And I would suggest to you that there really is no basis in fact and law at all to delay the action tonight by this council. There is simply no reason that this, this request this evening should not be heard. We've complied with all of your ordinances, we have gone through the process that your ordinances set out, and we are properly before you tonight. Everybody is here, the parties are all here, and this is a case that we need resolved. I think the city needs it resolved, and we ask you to take the opportunity and resolve it tonight. Now, there are some distinctions I want to touch on briefly that is different from our request to the Fredericks. If our request is granted and this right-of-way is sold to Favroville LLC, everyone will still have physical and legal access to their property. If this right-of-way is sold to the Fredericks, my clients will be landlocked. They will not have legal access or physical access to the property. There is also case law that would suggest if that happens, we would not even have a claim against the Fredericks to grant us a right-of-way, that we would then be limited to bringing a claim against the city for the diminution of our value, of the value of our properties. So a sale to my clients resolve the issue, would resolve the issues. A sale to the Fredericks would actually create more issues than they would solve. So again, we urge you not to table this case, but to move forward this evening. There was some concern that the lots on the New Hampshire side of the right-of-way, lots 8, 6, 10, and 12, could be landlocked. All of those lots are owned by members of my client. All of those owners are supportive of our request tonight. Each of those lots have direct access also to New Hampshire Street, and that is their main, main way of ingress and egress to those parcels. So again, no reason in which to delay based on that. I understand there's a concern about language in your subdivision ordinance, Section 5.1C7 that talks about lots not fronting a public right-of-way or a public street. Mr. Villery mentioned this at the commission. I want to make sure you understand, that language has nothing to do with the request this evening. The reason I say it has nothing to do with the request this evening is because it, one, is in your subdivision ordinance. The express language in that, in that portion of the ordinance says that it applies only to new subdivisions and plating of new lots. We're not asking you to review a subdivision, and we're not asking you to plat any lots this evening. So that language is a red herring, and it does not have any bearing on the case this evening. The city has no need for this right-of-way. The city has made that clear in past public hearings. For 70 years, neither the city nor the public has needed or used this right-of-way. The city has no interest in spending money in the right-of-way, and it shouldn't have to do that. The city does not want the right-of-way, the Fredericks do not need the right-of-way. They have legal access to New Hampshire, which came with the purchase of their lot. I urge you to please concur with your commission and sell this right-of-way to my clients. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Baldwin Reed?
Let's get him set up here. And shut. Was it pointing, pointing? Yep. Hang on a minute. Yeah. Hi, good evening. My name is Baldwin Reed. I currently reside in 616 South America Street, but I grew up at 622 South America Street, and I have lived in Favroville for most of my 70 years. I think that fact is important to you, for you to know, as I can validate firsthand most of what we're going to present to you tonight, much of what we're going to present, unlike Mr. Frederick, who speculates or conjures up falsehoods and repeatedly makes misrepresentations to the city and the public. I want to thank you for your service to Covington and for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We have a lot to say tonight to correct the record and to counter the three-year-long false narrative Mr. Frederick has developed. I pray that you will patiently indulge us with an open mind. We're here tonight because our neighborhood in Covington has become very dangerous. Our neighbor has directed a large number of vehicles to where they don't belong and where he wants to add even more vehicles. That same neighbor in his household have repeatedly and aggressively bullied our families. Article 1, Section 1 of the Louisiana State Constitution of 1974 states, "The purpose of government includes preservation of the peace, protection of the citizens, and promotion of the happiness and general welfare of the people." We strongly urge you to protect our neighborhood citizens. We offer you a solution that will end this dangerous and volatile situation that our neighbors, the Fredericks, have created. Favroville LLC, of which I am a member. I didn't advance.
Sorry?
Okay. Favroville LLC, of which I am a member and a manager, seeks to purchase this parcel of land. The LLC is composed of members who are all Favro descendants. All of the homes and lots in Favroville are owned by members of the LLC. The LLC serves as an HOA for the subdivision. LLC members contribute to the LLC, which pays the taxes on the land it owns and pays for maintenance and improvements on that land and the right-of-way, including utilities. In recent communications to all of you, Mr. Frederick wrote, "The Favros are feuding amongst themselves right now, and several of their homes are for sale." This is another one of his fabrications. The truth is that only one house in the subdivision is for sale, and for reasons totally unrelated to Mr. Frederick. Everyone is happy with life in the subdivision, except for having to defend themselves from the Fredericks. We assure you that every member of the LLC supports our application to purchase this piece of ground. The LLC is legitimate and has been in good standing since 1997, when it was succeeded, when it succeeded the Favroville partnership. It shouldn't be necessary to show you this, but questioning the legitimacy of the LLC is just more of the pasta that the Fredericks throw against the wall to see what will stick or to cause doubt and confusion in your mind as to the appropriateness and practicality of this sale. Contrary to Mr. Frederick's claims, the LLC is not a boogeyman who's going to sell the parcel to Walmart. Providing servitudes for utilities and lots that need the right-of-way to get to the public road is not a problem and is currently being addressed, solved by us in another instance. Their communications are replete with red herrings, exaggerations, and outright falsehoods. Don't let them confuse you. This is very doable. All we need is your support. Highlighted here, and I apologize for the orientation, but it matches other surveys we're going to show you, is the .82 acre piece of ground on the unopened right-of-way that we proposed to purchase. And here it is in context. The right-of-way, which is, I'm sorry, the palette, I'm not making the point of work. This area here where the dark green blobs are. This map contains a survey that reflect the current state of the relevant properties. The area in green is the footprint of the Favroville subdivision. The area in pink is Mr. Frederick's two lots. The arrows show the access, how the vehicles access their homes on the right-of-way. The homes on lots 13, 14, and 15 use a single-lane gravel driveway is the only access to their homes. Mr. Frederick, on the other hand, has access to a 25-foot-wide and 140-foot-long two-lane driveway to New Hampshire Street. It is 861 feet from Mr. Frederick's lot to 16th Avenue, where South America then becomes a two-lane improved street. That's over six times as far as he travels now over an inferior driveway. So much more to say, and I apologize. It's hard to consolidate this down. The Fredericks claim the city has constructed and maintained a big, beautiful, normal city for 75 years that dead-end it at their house. They claim their home was once 1201 South America Street. They claim criminal and corrupt people stole the street. Because of these false claims, they think they're entitled to run all the way, for their street to run all the way to their house. Apparently, they also feel entitled to wage war against us. They use the word "street" repeatedly to characterize an unopened right-of-way as something it is not, and to control the narrative. Of course, if you repeat a lie often enough, people will believe it. Every time you hear them call the right-of-way a "street," remember, it's an unopened right-of-way. There is no street, there never was a street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Michael Bell?
Before I give my name and address, we have a, we have hard copies of the PowerPoint for individual, any of you who would like them, but I think it might be some instances easier to read than looking at the screen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it being given to all council members. Not everybody does that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm talking, Mr. Doug Reed.
Hi, I am Michael Bell. I live at 810 South America Street, and thank you for this service, your service and this opportunity to speak with you. We think that you'll find the true history of this area enlightening. Favros began visiting Covington regularly in 1899. In 1919, they bought their first home here. Over the years, family members bought homes along the west side of the America Street right-of-way. In 1950, family members purchased the property on the east side of the right-of-way. By the late 80s, it became clear that the property should be subdivided into two, into separate lots. So in 1989, Carroll Realty's assets were converted into the lots of individual homeowners. Favroville Partnership, now an LLC, became the owner of this unbilledable Lot 21 in the private Carroll Drive. A few lots have a servitude over Carroll Drive to get to South America Street. The City of Covington approved this subdivision with the tennis court their word is today. This survey is dated January 15, 1955, and prepared by Covington Surveyor C.R. Schultz. South America Street was developed up to just north of what today is Carroll Drive. It ended with this elongated cul-de-sac for turning around. The street went this far presumably to serve the old Riverside Inn at 622 South America Street. The paving ends here today roughly where the cul-de-sac ended in 1955. The survey suggests that this situation existed for many years before 1955. These two houses on the South America Street right-of-way, excuse me, were accessed from Louisiana Street, which is now South New Hampshire Street, because this part of the America Street right-of-way was not developed. This house was built in 1936, and its access has always been South New Hampshire Street. Riverside Inn closed in the 1920s, and it's highly likely that this cul-de-sac end of America Street that served it was built long before the inn closed. The Fredericks have this purported and marked-up 1936 aerial photo of America Street, setting aside for the moment the question of its authenticity. You will see in it their driveway to New Hampshire Street and the cul-de-sac where America Street ended, and we showed, that we showed you on the 1955 survey. These random white marks might be the reflection of the sun on something, maybe spots where the grass is thin, who knows? But whatever it is, that is a street that ends at the cul-de-sac, and the rest of the right-of-way does not look like a street. Whatever it is, excuse me, this is hardly definitive evidence that the city built and maintained a street to their home, and it appears to show the opposite. This is what Mrs. Frederick said about her address at the P&amp;Z meeting in March. H.M. Favro bought the Frederick House in 1950. He died in 1953, and his relatives lived there until 2011, when his daughter sold the home to Mr. Scansy. They accessed it from South New Hampshire Street the entire time that they owned it. The evidence shows this, and people are still alive who can attest to this. And they used an 830 New Hampshire Street address the entire time that he owned it. Interestingly, Mrs. Frederick is correct that at one time, Mr. Favro identified his home as 1201 America Street. The problem is that when he used a 1201 America Street address, he did not live in the Frederick's He lived in this house at that time. H.M. Favro was an architect. In 1936, he designed and built this home with access from New Hampshire Street because the part of the row in front of his house was not developed. In designating his house as 1201 America Street, he may have thought that the row might one day be improved into an actual street. That didn't happen. And since this home had to be accessed from New Hampshire Street, he or subsequent owners of the home eventually began using the address of 822 South New Hampshire Street, and they still do today. In 1950, Mr. Favro bought the Frederick's house, which was next door, at 830 South New Hampshire Street, and he then sold this house to other members of the family. Here's an invitation that H.M. Favro sent to his architectural office staff, inviting them to 1201 America Street for a party in 1939. He included a map to tell guests how to get to his home at 1201 America Street from New Hampshire Street. That street seemed to have changed names a few times, so that's possibly explains the question mark on the street, but it's clearly, looking at the layout, it's New Hampshire Street. The Frederick's house is over here, and Mr. Favro's house was here. If you'd like an invitation, so you may take a closer look at this, this document, Mr. Favro's grandson has several copies, and he'd be glad to pass them out to you. So 1201, 1201 South America, 830 South New Hampshire. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Amay Bell?
I'm sure he meant it in a good way. Hi there, I'm Amay Bell. My address is 810 South America Street in Covington. Thank you for your service to Covington and for the opportunity to speak to you. We find it extremely offensive the way Mr. Frederick and his attorney speak of past city leaders who served this city, as you do today. It seems they say anything to suit their purposes. My grandfather, Clifford Favro, was a very honorable man. He was a friend to New Orleans, who among much other recognitions was awarded the time speaking in Levingco. And he was a great friend of Covington, which called him their own. In the 1950s, it was clear that the city had no public need for the right-of-way, and it was not going to develop it into a paved street. It was apparently easiest to leave the right-of-way alone when residents were happy to maintain and pay for it, and were also happy to buy recreational equipment for Covington's playgrounds, a fact that my grandfather humbly shared with his family, me, his granddaughter included. After 30 years, in 1989, the city again approved the situation, which created an entire subdivision built around this scenario. The Fredericks have made themselves judge and jury in condemning people they never knew, who lived in a different time when a man's word meant something, and where would have been, it would have never occurred to these gentlemen, that they would have to defend their honor to lawyers like these 70 years later. To recap, the Frederick's house never had a 1201 America Street address. South America Street was never improved to the Frederick's house, and their indictment of good, good, good men confirms that they still will say just about anything to get what they want. Let's now look at the Frederick's property. Until 2016, these three lots were one large lot with addresses of 830 South New Hampshire and with 141 feet of frontage on that street. In fact, this lot was a part of this property before it was later carved out. So the frontage on South New Hampshire Street was over 380 feet when Mr. H.M. Favro purchased it. David Scansy bought it in 2011. During all those years, 830 South New Hampshire was the address, and of course, the driveway was to South New Hampshire Street. Mike Scansy, Mr. Scansy saw that he could carve out three lots out of this one large lot and sell two of them. So he subdivided the property, and what you see is the result. Mr. Scansy built a new home on South New Hampshire Street on this lot. In 2020, he sold that, this lot with the 830 South New Hampshire Street address to Mr. Frederick. The city's approval of this subdivision and the abutting 1989 subdivision shows clearly how the Frederick's property was intended to be approached from South New Hampshire Street. The Fredericks seemed to be quite happy in their new home. In 2020, Mrs. Frederick created an Instagram page entitled "Our New Hampshire." However, per terms of the sale, Mr. Frederick had an option to buy this lot. A dispute arose between Mr. Scansy and Mr. Frederick about that option, and they ended up in a contentious litigation. So the Fredericks decided that they did not like driving by Mr. Scansy's home anymore, and they didn't want to be on South New Hampshire Street either. You might call it buyer's remorse. In any case, Mr. Frederick appears to know that it doesn't look good to cause all this mess to avoid a neighbor. At a P&amp;Z meeting, Mr. Frederick wouldn't even admit that he had a dispute with Mr. Scansy, but it's all in the public records. As Keith Villery said to you, "The fallout of this dispute should not fall upon the city to the detriment of numerous property owners." But this is where the Fredericks have put it. So to avoid one neighbor, they attacked a whole community of others. The common denominator is the Fredericks. The city doesn't own Mr. Frederick a street to his house, and we don't owe him use of our privately funded driveway, to which he has contributed nothing, nothing but wear and tear. And the city has a very serious public safety reason to now sell the right-of-way to us. We would be grateful for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Jennifer Smith? Ms. Jennifer Smith.
Good evening, I'm Jennifer Favreau-Smith. I live at 420 South, I drive Lotus Drive North in Mandeville. I'm representing my parents at 800 South America Street, which abuts the Frederick's property and I spend a lot of time at my parents' home. I want to talk about vehicular traffic on the right of way. In the survey on the left, you can see the curving pre-1989 driveways. The dashed lines on the right of way represent the current driveways we created to respect the new property laws. The city knew, the city we would build, the city knew that we would build this driveway and not a street to our homes. The driveway is partially on our lots, up to three feet, not less than 12 inches as Mr. Frederick has claimed to you. Mr. Frederick's proposed connection to our driveway would be 150 feet, not 60 feet as he said, nor 30 feet as she said to you last year. Other than our minimal driveway, this property we wish to purchase consists of a lawn with oak trees and a tennis court. It is certainly not a drivable street. Pre-Frederick's vehicular tactic was minimal, as you would expect. The only issue was that lost people would sometimes drive down the driveway and they would have to turn around in our circular drive. And in 2009, a resident put up a private drive sign to help public navigate the area. The intent was innocent, but the city asked that we, that it be taken down. So in that same year, 2009, it was taken down. The sign did not remain up for 15 years as Mr. Frederick has falsely claimed to you. The short-lived private drive sign was replaced with these two no-through traffic signs. Drivers still missed these signs, but it was not so common that we worried about our safety. Then the Fredericks invited the public to come on in. This happened Easter morning when the lost driver in the silver car missed the signs and wandered down the driveway. She backed up with dogs behind her. My mother moved her car to help her get out. We need to help people know to turn around before they get to this point. If we purchase the right of way, we can make this happen at Carroll Drive. Here is how Mr. Frederick himself drives on the right of way. We've seen this many times. Mr. Frederick repeatedly calls what you see there a street and says people use it all Nobody used the right of way to get to the Fredericks' house until they began inviting them to do so. Mr. Frederick repeatedly falsely claims delivery vehicles had, and the public at large accessed his house via South America Street. But the truth is that beginning in August of '23, we began encountering lost truck drivers. They would get to the end of our driveway and they would see a lawn between our driveway and the Fredericks' house. Drivers told us that the Fredericks gave them an 830 South America Street address. There is no such thing. The drivers explained that they can get fired for driving on lawns. So they turned around in our circular drive and then they have to go to the Fredericks' real driveway on South New Hampshire Street. These drivers seem to be pawns in Mr. Frederick's war. Mr. Frederick says there will be little or no traffic increase, as if his truck will be the only additional vehicle on the right of way that's already far off. And how does he square these statements with what he said at the March P and Z?
Unfortunately, with the Fredericks' proposal, traffic would get many times worse than what it once was. So everyone but Mr. Frederick would use our driveway to come and go from his house. He repeatedly says that we're concerned about through traffic. There won't be through traffic. His driveway is already private and when he closes it off, the public will use ours. No matter what he intends to do, we are talking about a lot of vehicles on a driveway. And add to that the traffic to the additional house that will be built on his empty lot by the river and it just gets more and more dangerous. We already deeply fear for our children, our grandchildren, our pets and our Covington friends. To put the, put all these vehicles on our driveway, the Fredericks would have to cooperate with us in terms of maintaining and paying to maintain the right of way. The Fredericks should get no benefit of the doubt of their ability to cooperate with us. What's even worse, imagine the run-ins on our driveway where courtesy is required to determine who will yield. We would be at their mercy forever. Here, Mr. Bell in the red vehicle for the sightseer, waits for his vehicle for the sightseer to pass by so that he may get to his home. We who share this driveway would be doing this forever. We all know that we would always have to yield to the Fredericks all of this so that they can have the second driveway. Mr. Frederick claims he only wants to remove the levee that he claims we placed there and just add some gravel so that he can get to this house from our driveway.
Thank you. Michelle Murphy.
Michelle Favreau-Murphy, I'm at 812 South America Street. And again, I thank y'all for your service to the city of Covington and allowing us to speak tonight. This is very much close to our hearts, so we do appreciate it. As you know, two years ago, the Fredericks began bullying us to get what they wanted and we have remained non-confrontational as much as possible, but we have witnessed so much. Please know everything that I'm going to be showing on the screen. We have hard evidence on, there are either videos, audio, pictures, or even words that the Fredericks have put out. So when the Fredericks didn't get what they demanded, they went ballistic. There's evidence, it is evidence that their intent was and still is to turn their family, friends, clients, and whoever would listen to them against us. They have, I'm, excuse me, they have said things to, they have said things to disparage us for all the word to see on social media. We only wish we were uber wealthy. And inciting intolerance for those who live in New Orleans is despicable enough, but to do it while lying is horrible. Many of us live and vote in Covington. And these are just the names and descriptions that they have used. You could spend hours on the thread that they laid their lies about what my family has done and it was hard for us to read. Obviously, attacks that, these types of attacks are the choice of the, for people like the Fredericks who don't have truth or logic on their side. We have not retaliated. We have, we have waited our turn. Setting aside the staggering incivilities of their rants, we can't help but point out their hypocrisy is astounding. This is what they have said about us? Who is freaked out? Who is unneighborly? Who is wealthy here? I'm sorry to say, their riverfront house is worth well more than any of the homes in our subdivision. Who feels entitled to two driveways, no matter what it costs the others? This is a text from, to our attorney from December of 2023. People from West 30s will be playing tennis in Favroville if I don't get what I want tomorrow. He goes on. It's a public property. The noise will be very loud if I don't get what I want very soon. I will be playing tennis there tomorrow, inviting everyone I know to play tennis. This is stupid and I have been super kind till now. You mix all that hostility with vehicles and it gets really scary for us. This one right here, I want to blow up, I want a terrorist to blow up the house and break the window, was said the day after the terrorist attack in New Orleans and my son was downtown that day. It's harder than I thought, I'm sorry. They've incited the public to destroy the tennis court, to play tennis and loud music on the right of way, to use the right of way as a street. These are all on social media. We can show it to you. We have decided not to put them on here right now. Whether the city, it's, the target is city property or private property, vandalism is just not right. It is commonly known that bicycle and skateboard wheels can create ruts on tennis courts. There was once a sign on the chain link fence that said, "No wheels on the tennis court", but it did not survive the last hurricane. Throughout all of this, we have never told the Fredericks they could not use the tennis court. We have only asked them kindly to keep the wheels off the tennis court so that it doesn't damage the surface. Mr. and Mrs. Frederick not only ignored us, they encouraged their family and guests to ride on the court, which may be why one of the family members decided to yell "F you" to Mrs. Bell when she had asked them to get off, to take the wheels off the court. We've got pictures of the damage on the surface, which will tell the full story. They would also go and sit on the net, which was damaging it, so we took it down. We took the, they cracked the pole and the pot, on the net. We have taken the basketball goal down just so that we can save our property. The Fredericks trespass on private property, not only, it was not just for us chasing tennis balls like they said. Here is Mr. Frederick on the property in 2023, walking around, taking pictures. Over the Christmas holidays, he had members ride their bikes up at the, up to Mr. Bell's house and he, they just wanted to taunt them. We've got verbal assaults. This has been the hardest part for me as an educator. The amount of profanity that has been directed at us outside of my front door has been horrific. Mr. Frederick at the planning and zoning said, "None of this is true. None of this about the kids is true. No one has done anything about these people." This is what we have seen. I'm going quickly through this because it is hard to show all this on screen, but these are, this is what our family has been looking at for the last two years. So I do hope you will listen to what we have to say and listen to what we are, the safety of our, they put. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jamison Bagwell.
I have no dog in the hunt so much as who, who gets to buy the property or not. I guess my comments are procedurally. Selling it to one party is just not equitable. The, what the council voted on before, the development board voted was that the street could be sold, not that the street had to be sold to the Favre's. As you saw on all their maps they put up, that body is surrounded by more than one owner. And I'm sure Rod and all them agree that sometimes the council or the mayors might find when one property owner surrounds an entire piece of public land, sure that that land becomes no more longer usable except for the people around that property. It's a, therefore, the council may vote to sell it. That's really not the case here. Because it bounds multiple, multiple people, this council does not really have the right to pick and choose a winner. That's not how the law works. If anything, if the council rules in favor of one person, then pretty sure that other person can immediately file injunction in court and it will be struck down and then the council will be stuck in litigation. So I think that really needs to be taken into account here, that this council can only vote today whether they want to sell the property. Then they just go to public auction and, and go the proper procedures. If this council strictly votes that they want to sell to one party versus the other, then I think the council is going to find themselves in a little bit of trouble. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I want to address Mr. Maron's procedural arguments first. I believe that all of this started when Mr. Frederick submitted an application to remove the dirt on the street, the street where the tennis court is. It's a street, we know it's a street. Rod knows it's a street. Rod knows that the tennis court is on a public street. Mr. Frederick submitted that application more than two years ago, I believe. And I, I might be a little off in my date, but roughly two years ago, it was definitely in 2023. And the city council has never heard it. It's never been put on an agenda. The mayor doesn't want to act on it, he doesn't want it hurt. Paul Maron gets up and says, "Well, it's appropriate for you to argue this now because the Favros and just the Favros want the right to buy the street." After the Favros submitted their application to purchase the street, Mr. Frederick submitted a second application, this time to buy the street. Why is it that the Favros are the only people who can buy the street? Why is it that a street in public use, and it is still in public use? Every time somebody plays a game of tennis on the tennis court, they're playing a game of tennis on a public tennis court. It is a public use. Anytime anybody walks to the tennis court, anybody, anytime anybody walks near there, they're walking down a public street. This is what a town is about. People should be free to walk down the public streets. All we're asking is to get rid of the dirt, the tennis court, and let it be what it is. What it is is a public street. Mr. Butler is going to, going to come, and I'm sure you all know Bruce Butler, he's a well-regarded surveyor here in town. He will tell you that the bed of the street is still there. Remember, Paul Maron told us that this all happened, I don't remember whether it was the 1950s roughly, in the 1950s, when one of the Favros said to whoever was the mayor at the time, and, and I don't want to put words in Paul's mouth, but what they said was, "You want some equipment for your playgrounds? I'll buy the equipment, you let me cover this road with dirt and put a tennis court up." Whatever that deal is, that was the deal. Now they're saying, because they did that back then, they get to buy the whole thing? Nobody else gets to bid on it? Nobody else has a say? It's not right. Mr. Frederick applied to have the dirt removed. No action by the mayor's office, no action by the city council, never been heard, 2023. The Favros apply to buy the property from the city. They first, the, the planning commission says no, and now they say yes. What you should do, honestly, is you should reject their yes recommendation and do nothing. Do absolutely nothing. That's the appropriate measure. Don't help either side. Any questions?
You are actually standing before us saying that you want the status quo?
I'm saying that the best thing for the city government of Covington is to keep the status quo, reject the planning commission, and let nothing happen.
You realize you and your client are the only one that don't want the status quo?
Uh, I'm sorry, you're saying that no one has spoken?
I am saying that your client is the only one that does not want the status quo. Well, if you look at Favroville and its peace and harmony that it has had, and you stand before us and you did it before P and Z, I'm just trying to understand your argument.
My argument is this, sir. Mr. Frederick's applications, he now has two, have never been before any. The Favros file an application and it immediately comes up.
When did he, when did he ask for the permit?
I, as I said, I do not know the exact date, but I believe it was 2020.
Okay, so for two years, he's had a pending permit?
May, May 2nd, 2023.
He didn't have any inclination to do anything else other than have that permit?
He does not have that.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right. Well, it's, and not acted on.
So now that the Favros who have demonstrated, I think, and made a compelling argument about the circumstances, they are, they are the ones, they are the petitioners. And now you are the petitioners at P and Z to purchase the property, is that correct?
I believe Mr. Frederick's application to purchase was filed after the Favros, correct?
Right. Okay.
I mean, go to the point of the speaker performing. Why isn't there, why is this being sold only to one party?
That's before this.
I'm sorry, sir.
That is what, we are here on what we are here on, right? So the idea, I'm just trying to understand your argument.
My argument is that the city council should reject the planning board's recommendation because it's a bad idea to do this. It's bad for the city and it says bad things for the city. And the better move is for this council to say, "No, we're not going to do this." Maybe you put everybody that wants to buy the street and let them all come and they can have a bid on it. Maybe you uncover the street, you get rid of the tennis court, you let dogs and kids walk and play and go down the street like a city. Does that answer your question, sir?
No, it does not. It was, it was a nice colloquy, but it didn't answer my question. What I asked you was, do you and your client intend to ask this? What I asked you was, do you and your client intend to ask this council and this city for the status quo? And it seems to me, that's what you said at P and Z, you want the status quo.
Was that the best thing the council can do tonight is take no action, which can only be done by rejecting planning and zoning. Anything other than rejecting their recommendation is accepting their recommendation and the Favros get to buy it. No one else has been heard but by, before this council on those issues.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Ms. Jennifer Frederick.
Hi, how are y'all tonight? I'm Jennifer Frederick. I live at 8:30, South New Hampshire. My husband couldn't be here tonight because he coaches baseball, and they had two games for Covington Rec. So I'm going to read his letter first, and then I'm going to address some comments that were made, or answer some questions that they might have said. So this is from my husband, Renee. The only thing this council needs to consider is, is there any public use for this property? If so, the street cannot be sold. Think about what brings us here tonight. 125 years ago, the city of Covington built South America Street to dead end at my house. For 65 years, South America Street was used by the public and maintained by the city, just like any other street in Covington. Then 60 years ago, the Favros, including the owner of my home at the time, who was Favro, I don't, there's no initial, cut a deal with the city to look the other way while they buried the street and built the tennis court. The deal was not in writing, and no legal terms were set. But why didn't the city just sell it to the Favros back then? The answer is because it is a public street, and public streets in use by the public cannot be sold by the city. In the 90s, when the Favros asked to pave South America Street, the city reminded the Favros that it is a public street. Why didn't the city just sell it to the Favros in the 90s? The answer is because it is a public street in use by the public, can't be sold by the city. My husband and I have simply applied to remove the dirt that covers part of South America Street. The dirt is basically a levee which prevents the street from draining. It was illegally placed there by the Favros without a permit. It blocks the natural drainage of the street and has even caused the flooding of a Favros home. If there is any public use for the street, it cannot be sold. Our application to use the street is a public use. Just because the current mayor wants to sell the property does not mean that there is no public use for the street. Just because the current mayor does not want to deal with the headache of solving this problem does not mean that there is no public use for the street. Administrative laziness does not compel the sale of the street. The mayor only serves for a brief period in life of Covington. The footprint of one of Covington's most historic streets must be preserved. Selling South America Street is stealing from Covington's history. In two years, there will be a different mayor, but by voting to sell the street, you will forever alter one of Covington's most historic streets. You cannot ignore reality and declare that there is no public use for this street. Now, we didn't make up the history of this home. Jack Terry, he's a historical historian, he, I applied to have the house, what is it called? To be in the Covington history plaque. So when you apply for that, they do a whole research on the home. When it was built, who it was from, I mean, it is so detailed, it transfers. He goes to the courthouse to the farmer, paper, pulls up everything, does a whole timeline, pulls up every pictures. Our home was the Oak Annex Hotel. The street went to the house. Of course, it wasn't paved, it was never asphalted. When it was in use, they were driving around horse and buggy. So when it came time in whatever, whenever they started asphalting the road, it only went to a certain part. They didn't asphalt the whole, the, the rest of the way. You know, we hired a land surveyor, did the land, it's a public road. It's not their private property. We hired an engineer. The engineer told me, drive it morning, noon, and night. He said it is not against the law. If I drive on that road, if I walk on that road, I would not get arrested. It is a public road. Public safety, you know, they showed the pictures of my husband driving on the road. He was going the speed limit. Do they have a speed radar gun showing that he's speeding recklessly? No, they don't. We have, some of these people that came up, I've never even met them in my life, they've never been in any of the meetings that we've had for this road. Mark, you've been in most of them, you've been to my home. We have never been ugly to them. Mr. Reed, I've never met him in my life, he said I curse and everything else. Sorry, okay. Um, let's see. I guess it, it's a public road. My family, we live at this home, my, my, all of my utilities are there, my electricity, my gas, my water. We drain all of Favroville through a pipe, through our pond. It's a road. We should be able to get to use the road. All we have done, and it's created, all of this, is just apply, which normally is two to three days to put down a little, I mean gravel, that's it. Thank you, sorry.
Sims Favro.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Sims Favro. I reside at 1904 Palmer Avenue in New Orleans. I'm the grandson of H.M. Favro, who, along with his wife, my grandmother, purchased what is now the Frederick Residence in 1950. Prior to that, in 1936, my parents, grandparents constructed the residence next door to the present Frederick Residence, which is today owned by Mr. Caffrey Favro, who's here. And it was only after they, residing in that home for 13, 14 years, did they buy the Frederick Residence in 1950. I just want to emphasize the fact that any assertion that the Frederick Residence once had an address of 1201 South America Street is utterly false and has no basis in fact. I know that because I've got a document here that Mr. Bell referred to earlier, copies of which I can be, be happy to distribute to any of you, that is signed by my grandfather with his own signature dated February of 1939, in which he clearly and unequivocal, unequivocally refers to his then residence, next door to the Frederick Residence, as 1201 America Street. This was 11 years before he purchased the Frederick Residence. So it seems like the historian, Mrs. Frederick referred to, that apparently did some research on the house and told them that the house had a, once had an address of 1201 America Street. That fallacy seems to have originated when that historian must have found a, a document or something that referred to my grandfather as owning a residence of 1201 America Street, and that person erroneously assumed that that reference was to the Frederick Residence, and it was not. So to the extent any one of you might be considering relying on the, the Frederick's claim that the, that that house once had an America Street address, I would urge you to, respectfully urge you to disregard that. I'd also like to emphasize that what is now the Frederick Residence was in my family for the first 51 years of my life, and during that time, I spent countless hours, days, and weeks in that residence. And I can tell you, it was never, ever referred to at any time as having had an address on America Street. No one ever in my extended family ever complained about access, having access to the, to that house only from South New Hampshire Street. No one ever expressed desire to have any access to America Street. Everyone was delighted to have that unopened street right of way in our front yard as green space, and never, never, and no one ever had a thought of ever trying to change that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sam Jaberga.
Nice to see you all again from this side. Mr. Bushnell, we haven't met, I was on the council sort of when all of these issues began to surface, and congratulations, and glad you're here to help make this decision tonight. When we first began this journey together, you know, I did the same work everybody here has done, you know, met with members of the Favro family, met with the Fredericks, and tried to sort of come to an understanding of what was going on. A couple of things were, were readily apparent to me, perhaps to you as well. The first being that there is no street that is there. There is an open, unopened right of way, whether there was a street there some time ago, I have no idea. But the facts today are that there is no street there. It is a grassy knoll and what seems to be green space. The other fact that is clear is when the Fredericks bought their home, and it is a beautiful home, it truly is, it's stunning. And when they bought that home, it was on New Hampshire Street. And the person that they bought that home from lived on New Hampshire Street. And their access to the house was from New Hampshire Street. And nothing has changed such that the house that they bought cannot access New Hampshire Street. That's another fact. The third fact that sort of I began to understand as, as I began to understand exactly what it is that was being asked for, is that the idea is to open an unopened right of way and to terminate it at the Fredericks' property. And what that showed me is that really the only person in the city of Covington standing to benefit from all of this drama are the Fredericks. One citizen. It was mentioned earlier, you know, that the council should not be in the business of picking a winner, picking a loser. I would disagree with that insofar as to say, I think the job of the council is to figure out what is in the best interest of Covington as a community, and what is in the best interest of all of our citizens at the home. I understand that the Fredericks would like to have a South America address, but that doesn't mean they get one. The citizens as a whole in Covington, I think, are entitled to peace first and foremost. And sadly, we haven't seen that. I haven't seen it. I've seen an escalation of behavior in our community, in this little town, that is really I have seen efforts to disturb the peace in troubling ways, and I see no lack of willingness to escalate further unless this issue is finally dealt with and put to bed. If you don't act, this will not get better. This is not wine. This will get worse. Could be that someone's going to bring a lawsuit here, so be it. Bring your lawsuit. I hope you're right. I hope you can win. But I know that if I were still sitting in, in your chair, where I would come down on, on this issue? The city is going to get some money, money it should receive, determined by a public appraiser. It is not okay that public land has been privately used. That's not okay. And that is being fixed through this action. How we got here, that's in the rearview mirror. Where are we today? I urge you to put this issue away, put this issue to bed, and let's move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bruce Butler.
Bruce Butler, 518 North Columbia Street, with land surveying. Some, roughly three years ago, the Fredericks hired my company to determine if the existing old roadbed was within the dedicated right of way of South America Street. So my company came in, we surveyed, we found the right of way, and in my opinion, yes, the old existing roadway is in the right of way, along with several utilities, electric, water. There's several drainage drop inlets that drain several pieces of property, and appears to go across a Frederick's property. So I kind of have a, not a problem, but everybody's saying it's not open. It, it's a dedicated right of way, and I have no bias with anybody, but it's a public right of way. So it's just, it, it was, appeared to have been constructed at one time, there are somewhat of swales either side of an existing roadbed, in my opinion. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Is it Julie Vickers? How about Julie Vickers? I'll pay for you.
Thank you all so much. Really do appreciate all you do and your service for us here. My name's Julie Favro-Vickers, and I own lot 16 in the subdivision. I'd just like to highlight some of the quotes from the correspondence you've received from the young adults in our family. "The future is definitely watching and absorbing." I'm going to be quoting a few of the emails. Quote, "I am 18 years old and a senior in high school. I feel very blessed to have all four of my grandparents in my life, and I feel equally as blessed that they have come, they have homes in Covington." Another quote is, "I learned a lot in my civics in government class, and this email to you is my first attempt at a real civics exercise. I have learned that now more than ever, that common courtesy and common sense needs to be practiced amongst the members of my generation and beyond. I will surely try to do my part." Another one writes, "We are in our early 30s and are blessed with a precious nine-month-old son. Our sincere intention is to raise him in our home, surrounded with love and peace. We plan to guide him to become a productive member of this, of this community, to be kind to his fellow man, and to be accountable for his actions. We have faith in the city of Covington to now do what is right and just." And yet from another, "I am 18 years old and a senior at Covington High School. I am grateful to be a part of an extended family who has set a wonderful example for civil discourse and has exercised respectful communication." And then finally, quote, "Witnessing their courteous and civilized handling of this very unpleasant situation has provided me with the formula of how I want to conduct myself now and in the future. I see this situation as a real teaching moment, not just for myself, but for the entire community." Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. All right, that is the extent of the cards that we have. Council comments?
Well, thank you for everybody who came in and gave us some additional insight. My first question isn't actually to anyone who spoke, but it's actually to our city attorney. Whether this is a, a public service announcement, the question I have is, is it legal for us to go through this process and sell this property? So what is the, the history that allows us to do so?
Well, you, you have state-enabling legislation that authorized the parish and municipalities to adopt an ordinance enabling the, the city to revoke streets. The methodology is basically fourfold, all with one underlying premise. If the government body, the city council, the If the government body, the city council, determines that a street is no longer needed for public purposes, which is the test outlined in the ordinance, the city can then dispose of the street in four different fashions. The city can merely revoke the street, which requires a certain type of petition. If the street is revoked, the street ownership to the center line of the street relegates to the adjoining property owners free of charge. The second methodology is to authorize a sale of the street, which is facilitated by an appraisal, and the city is then authorized to sell the property to the petitioner for a price not less than the appraised value. There is also a methodology to execute an active exchange where the petitioner wants to swap property with the city. That is not before us. And there's a fourth methodology where you have a public auction. That's not before us. So we have a petition to purchase the property from the city that public, the enabling legislation or actually the city ordinance requires that the planning commission review the petition to purchase the street. The planning commission also makes a determination whether the street is no longer needed for public purposes, which they did. That matter is then referred to you. You have to ratify the finding that the street is no longer needed for public purposes because the planning commission voted in favor of the revocation, or actually the sale. Technically, it's not a revocation. It's a sale because they voted in favor of it. It takes a simple majority of the city council to ratify that the street is no longer needed for public purposes. If they would have voted against it, it would have taken a majority, a supermajority of the council, five votes to overturn them. So you're a simple majority. If you make a motion or if you make a motion that the street is no longer needed for public purposes and that the city should sell the street to petitioner, you path an ordinance, and it would be sold for not less than the appraised value, which I think is $140,000 or $170,000, I don't remember the number, approximately $140,000, whatever that appraised value was.
Right. Can we determine that it's not public use if there is somebody applying for a permit for it to use it? Can we determine that a street is not going to be a public use if somebody has applied to use the street?
Yeah.
You can.
Well, in other words, it's no longer needed for public purposes, that the sale of the street will not impede the public use because the public doesn't use it, or it's not needed for public use because it's a dead-end street.
I guess, I think what Joey said, and I kind of feel the same way, it's like, and I get it, hey, you know, we're a bedroom community, we should all be good neighbors, and it sounds like this is very contentious on both sides. However, if there is one person that could access that street, whether he has access to it now or not, is it fair to say, well, it's not needed for public use if one side is using it for public use and the other person that wants to do the same could do so?
Well, that's a factual finding that you make. I wouldn't say it precludes you from reaching that determination.
Yeah, I would think that ultimately, I mean, I made some notes on this. I mean, it is a fact, correct me if I'm wrong, America Street has always been a dead-end street from what we can tell. All the city maps that I've looked at indicate it's been a dead-end street since the city laid it out. In the 1920s, the Favreau family began acquiring the property on either side of America Street beyond 16th Avenue. And from my review of the records, the property for 100 years has basically been solely used by the handful of Favreau property owners to access their residences. So there's been no public use. I don't think anybody has any knowledge of, especially when you look at the unique character of what we commonly refer to as Favreauville. We certainly notice there hasn't been any public use for a large portion of the street because there's a tennis court in the middle of it. So if the tennis court's been in the middle of the street or right-of-way for 50 years, I don't know of one complaint, not a singular complaint, that's been heard from the public that a city street was being blocked. The reason is that no one from the public uses the street.
Well, can I, I guess, add my two cents? And I guess I'm going to do a timeline for my sake because I need some clarification. I thought I was kind of straight from our last meeting, but after tonight I heard some new information. To your point, over the years, it seems like the South America Street was managed or taken care of by one family. There's been no complaints by anybody else in the city because I guess we can say we were under the understanding that it was a private street. And that's from the mentioning of speakers that there was a sign up that said, "Private Street," right? So I would assume that would be the understanding until it was taken down, say, in, I think a speaker said 2009. But I'm also understanding that, Mark, you had it taken down recently, right?
Well, let's go back on this because I think the public really needs to recognize and understand what this council has been under. And I do want to thank everybody who's here. No, because I was speaking to begin with, it was nice enough to let you interrupt. And then you asked me a question, so I think I'm going to go ahead and answer it. At the end of the day, my journey on this started, and Ms. Frederick's correct, I received a call from her, and she said, "Councilman Verrett, would you come to my house? I want to show you some things, and I want to run some things by you." And I sat at their kitchen table, and she showed me maps of all of this, what they're referring to. Mr. Murphy, who lives across the street from me, a very well-thought-of individual who's an engineer, the Fredericks hired, they went to Bruce Butler, and the bottom line was that they no longer wanted to go down their access of New Hampshire because they didn't want to pass again that way. This is my turn, okay? You and I met, and you wanted to see what you could do on South America for whatever reason. And I said, "That's going to be a lot of moving parts. Let me look into it." Fair enough? Then I met with your neighbors who were universally opposed for all the reasons that they have put up there. I don't think that to demonize them is completely false and wrong. They have their opinion the same way that you have your opinion. So then, and my council clerk and I actually did this the other day, I've had nine different meetings with the Fredericks, the Favreous, the Fredericks and the Favreos, their attorneys, in an effort to compromise or resolve or what can we do on this situation? Fair? Fair? And then it began a, I don't know how else to put it, a threatening bullying campaign against me to do or give or else. And I think the rest of these council members, they can certainly speak for themselves, have been subjected to an inordinate amount of bullying and threatening emails, text messages, social media posts. I got one here, lady who's filming me is the one that posted it, and I'll ask her to take it down. "I'm not sure who's considering to run for mayor besides the news release I saw. If you Kansas City Council President, be honest and say a man of your word, there's no trust from me at all. Not returning calls to constituents, but advises the council that a situation of an employee using someone else's personal information and abusing the city's card on gas is not a big deal. Let's not discuss any further. Nonnecessary is acceptable, et cetera." I would encourage people to look on, and I should be flattered with the attention, but I'm not. There has been an unreal amount of a campaign in a defamation manner in my opinion. But we're here today. I don't think it's about the Fredericks. I don't think it's about the Favreos. This is a unique piece of property that the city does not want. The city has never maintained, I have asked for any, any documentation. Covenant Public Works Department records clearly indicate they've never performed any maintenance on America Street beyond 16th Avenue. Is Mr. Jim O'Berry here? Is that accurate? The engineering department has indicated there could be drainage issues that the city would have to deal with if the street is open, if the street is open. And I think at P&amp;Z, is Ms. Calley here? There's going to be a lot involved with that, am I right? It's going to be quite expensive, et cetera, drainage. I'd like Jim and Calley to just come up real quick, and I'd like to ask them, what would it take on behalf of this city to open that right-of-way?
So Calley and I have both looked at this in every way that you can, and it's not just removing dirt to make a freeway and adding a little gravel. Once you change the topography of the land, it is going to change the hydrology of the land. So with that being said, you're going to have to add ditches to channelize the water. When you channelize the water, you're going to have to add culverts for them to get across. Then what do you do with the water? So you're going to have to acquire lateral servitude to get the water to the river away from these other people's houses. It's not just as simple as removing dirt and adding gravel. I'll let Calley comment as well.
So I believe Jim pretty well summed it up, essentially in order to build it to city standards for a public road. Even if we do allow it to be a gravel roadway, there is more consideration than just the surface of the road. We do have to address the drainage issues and the fact that it forms a bowl at the end where the dead end would be in the road. And in order for the road to not go underwater during rain events, we would have to address that. Now, in order for it to be developed to city standards, it's typically not to the city to develop the right-of-way, to develop the street. It's the obligation of the applicant, the petitioner, that wishes to have the street developed, and it is also at their cost. The concern with the expense comes in for the city is the cost of maintenance and the air maintenance.
So is there a question on that too? So I know we're talking about sale, 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 and let's say the perp role and everybody got along, right? There was no issues with this. If they wanted to revoke this and extend the rocks and take down the mound, that would solely be on the people that the street was revoked to, right? It would have nothing to do with the city because we wouldn't own it. So my question is, is that if we revoked the street and everybody was in agreement, I'm just saying, the city would not be responsible for that from 16th down to the dead end of South America Street at all. It would be solely upon the people that butt up to the property to maintain drainage, everything else with that. The city would be relieved of that, correct?
So I think it's fair to say the engineering department has some serious drainage issues we'll have to deal with if the street's open. Is that an easy way to say that?
I agree.
All right. So true or false? I've got the administration in front of me. The city administration does not wish to assume maintenance of America Street or its drainage. Is that correct?
The administration views it as an unopened right-of-way. I think the use of the word "street" is really not correct. As a builder developer for almost 20 years, I built streets, I drive on streets, I know what streets look like. They don't have tennis courts in the middle, and this is not a street. If you're going to build a street, it's going to have to meet a city specifications. The city has not had to maintain this undeveloped right-of-way in my lifetime, and I really am uncomfortable with the idea that we're going to start taking taxpayer dollars to maintain a right-of-way which we don't have to maintain. And so, correct, the administration does not want to take on that burden on behalf of the taxpayers of the city.
So with that, I think that makes it back to the point of no longer needed for public purposes and Rod's point of what the law is. I believe it's abundantly clear that the portion of this is no longer needed for public purposes, and what's before us is to be sold for its appraised value. And I think that, quite honestly, this needs to be given to administration to deal with. The city does not want the property. The city has not maintained the property. The city will not maintain the property. And the idea that there's another competing buyer out there or however many buyers are out there, we have to deal, and I told Mr. Frederick this ad nauseam, this council deals with what is before it. And what is before us is authorization to allow the mayor to enter into a sale. Now, what he does with that, that's not my purview. So I would strongly recommend the obvious answer is yes.
I would like to finish what my statement was, though. I think this council also needs to take into consideration this process that both families have been put into. I think from the beginning, you know, we can definitely see whether it was a city street or not, whether it's revoked or not. We've both seen evidence where letters have been issued that it was a city street. That's one issue. My other big issue is that when citizens try and follow the rule of law and do things properly, as in Mr. Frederick, and applying for the right-of-way application, you know, people need to be answered. And you know, since 2023, this guy was not answered. That is not proper for any citizen on any side. So I think this council also needs to look at all factors when we're considering this. It's just messed up for both sides that we need to kind of consider, and hopefully there's administration that make adjustments moving forward. But we don't need to start sending presidents that can hurt the city moving forward.
And I would just point out that this is not going to be any precedent by any stretch, that this council deals with the agenda and the items and the petitioners that come before it. I understand your point, and I think it's a point that administration needs to address or not address. That's not my purview. We stay in our lane. And what we have before us, I will quote, is an ordinance of the city of Covington authorizing the mayor to sell on behalf of the city of Covington a portion of the South America Street right-of-way. Seems pretty straightforward to me. Any other council comment? Hearing none. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Sub move.
I need a second.
Second.
I need a motion to adopt.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmond.
Yes.
Councilman Burrell.
Yes.
Councilman Botzford.
No.
Councilman Verrett.
Yes.
Councilman Lewis.
No.
Councilman Bushnell.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Public hearing in action on item number 2025-04-03, an ordinance of the city of Covington levying, imposing, and adopting the millage rates on all property subject to taxation in the city of Covington for the year 2025. Councilman Roberts.
Yeah, I can keep this pretty simple. There will be no change to this year's millage, and so I just ask you all to support this because it's all going to stay the same, it's not going to roll forward, and that if there's any questions that's specific to the situation, Ms. Nina is in the building, so we can direct some questions to her.
I have a legal question, and I'm going to kind of ask, everybody can kind of be a little quiet, we still have a remainder of a meeting. Hey, Rod. All right, so I ask this every year. If we move to adopt in a second and a majority vote on the way it is presented to this council, is there any increase in taxes at all? All right, so Nina, great job. Because I am not in favor of increasing taxes, and I'm not in favor of doing it this way especially. Any public comment? Any council comment?
I'd just like to say, since she's here, thank you for what you do. It's not easy to keep up with all this, so Nina, you're a blessing to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. I need a motion to close.
Motion to close.
I need a second.
Second.
I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
I need a second. Roll call please.
Councilman Burrell.
Yes.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Councilman Varette.
Yes.
Councilman Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilman Bushnell.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Moving on to the new business items to be voted on. Resolution number 2025 dash 12. A resolution of the Covenant City Council appointing Bert Duvic as the District E appointment to the Covington Planning and, uh, Zoning Commission. Bert, you here? Well, uh, you sure you wanna do this? Let me tell you what about Bert. When I first got elected in District E, um, he had served on the Planning and Zoning Commission and admirably did, everybody said he did a great job. Lot of people want to participate in public service. I called him, we talked about it. And, um. I can't believe you wanna come back, but at the end of the day, I am so very pleased that you are coming back because, and, and I, and I told you this privately, but I decided I'm gonna do it publicly anyway. Your reputation is excellent on your service to this city. And so I strongly recommend. A yes vote, but I would like you to, to say whatever you would like tonight.
Bert Duvic, 1326 South Yankee Avenue. I was honored by the phone call. I'm pleased to accept. And. I'm a firm believer that you can't just take from the city in which you live in, that you must give back. And that's why I'm. Willing to take ethics training again for however many more years that I have to do it. I hate it. I thought I'd come and surprise you and hold my certificate and just hand it to the clerk when I came today, but, uh. Look forward to working with the council, with planning and zoning. With the wonderful staff we have in this city and I appreciate the confidence that you've placed in me. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you sir. Any council comment?
No, I just wanna say thank you at that point.
Yeah, thank you very much, cuz you know, a lot of times it's.
Yeah, I'll echo, uh, Mark's comments also. My first appointment, so I asked around and Bert, your name came up time and time and again, uh, that we couldn't find a better addition to the P and Z, so. Better sucker, sure. But, uh, no. Thank you for stepping up and doing it, really appreciate it.
Hold up Bert, we ain't voted yet. Gotta make sure, you know. We had a little razor thin vote a while ago, I'm hoping yours won't be as close. Uh, I need a motion to accept.
Sub move.
I need a second.
Second.
I need a roll call.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Councilman Varette.
Yes.
Councilman Lewis.
Yes.
Councilman Bushnell.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Burrell.
Yes.
All right, uh, resolution number 2025 dash 13. A resolution of the Covington City Council certifying and designating. The president of the council as acting mayor during the mayor's absence starting June 9th, 2025. Through June 26th, 2025. Councilman Botford.
All right, this is a procedural, uh, thing that we're doing here. It's, uh, when the mayor's out of town for, for, over 14 days, correct? Yeah, over 14 days, then the council president would step in. Uh, and run it and, uh. Mark is, Mayor Mark has already said he's going to padlock his doors. And, uh. Everything on that side. But, uh, I, no, I think, uh, Mark will do a great job. And, uh, I recommend that we approve this.
Yesterday coincidentally, um, coincidentally, I announced my candidacy for mayor. I did not realize that I would be mayor so quickly after that announcement. Was, uh, did, did administration wish to have any comments? See, a ringing endorsement. Um, council?
Comments?
Hearing none. I need a motion to accept.
Sub move.
I'd like a second.
Second.
And I would like a roll call.
Councilman Varette.
Yes.
Councilman Lewis.
I'm gonna remember that when I'm mayor.
Councilman Bushnell.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Burrell.
Yes.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Thank you all. Um. Thank you. All right, so we will now move on to council district and committee reports. Councilman Lewis.
Uh, only thing I want to remind everybody about is our June 20 event. Uh, we'll be having it on the third. Saturday in June on the 21st and Peter Atkins Park. More to come will be posted on our social media. Just, um. Check it out on Facebook or, um, Facebook. Thanks a lot.
Thank you sir. All right, District B.
District B. I'd like to give a little shout out to, uh, Public Works for the dugouts they're doing out there and taking care of. Councilman, uh, Botford and I got taken care of in, uh, the savannas, I appreciate that. Also give a shout out to Councilman Roberts for his 81% free throw percentage. So.
Eighty-one percent?
Out of 2,500 shots, so give him a round. Off a charity. It's the. Yeah. School will be letting out soon, so be more traffic, more people, the kids at our parks, so. Everybody be safe out there.
Thank you sir. District C.
Uh, absolutely, so the free throw thing, I don't wanna talk about what I do for a living, but I do wanna talk about, uh, it's Give Nola Day. If you're not familiar with it, every nonprofit has a Give Nola opportunity to, uh, to receive funds for donors that wouldn't normally donate. So if you go to givnola.org, you can find your favorite nonprofit, doesn't have to be anything related to me having these comments, but just find something in your heart that you wanna be passionate about and give to them because I can promise you nonprofits need to help. I will self promote here and say, and it's only because May 10th is Healthy Kids Day for the YMCA, we're having a 5K out at our branch. So if you're interested and you're a runner, we have a lot of runners in this community. Register over at, uh, YMCA, at greaternewallens.org. And, uh, you can find a lot of registration there. And then other than that, I just wanna commend. All of you guys up here because this is not easy at all. And it makes. All of us. Have to endure some stuff that we should not endure, but that comes with the territory of the titles that we have. So, uh, I just wanna say thank you guys for doing what you do. It is a blessing to sit next to you and, uh, let's just keep making Covington what Covington is.
Good comments, thank you councilman. All right, District D.
District D, um, the first thing is, uh, we have, uh. We've had some reports obviously of speeding throughout the district. We do have side streets that come off Tyler. And, uh, let's just say that they're quite busy until the bottleneck of 21st and Tyler can eventually be addressed. This is gonna be a repeated concern. There have been increased patrols, thank you to the police department for doing that. The mayor has, uh, looked into speed studies for the region to determine what mitigation measures. Can be implemented. So. All I can tell you is we are working on it. Uh, the library, May 20th, 4 to 5 p.m. Microsoft, uh, um, Excel. You can go in there for a class, they'll do a workshop with you. May 31st is the Belphar concert, that's 10 to 11 a.m. Graduates of all of our local high schools. Private, parochial and public. Congratulations. Uh, whether you're going into college or a technical school or you're just entering the workforce. Good luck and, uh, enjoy adulthood. Um, trust me, it's, it's a good time. Work. Um, school is out, uh, well, not quite, but it will be. I'm just looking forward to it. Yes, I'm just looking forward to it. So, but, uh, to reiterate what Councilman Bushnell said. There are gonna be, um. People on the streets during the course of the day that would normally be in school, so well. Uh, the streets will be a little bit more crowded, so please make adjustments as needed. Thank you.
Thank you sir. District E.
All right, just a couple this evening. Covington Business Association monthly meeting is tomorrow and they're taking a field trip. They're gonna be at Stone Creek, so go see them out there. And then, uh, the boat launch at Fourth Street is coming along fantastically, the ramps have been poured. The concrete portion of the dock that'll attach to the wooden part of the dock has been poured and so I'm just excited watching that progress. And look forward to everybody being able to enjoy that this summer. Otherwise. Everyone just stay safe out there and. Enjoy Covington.
Councilman Lord.
All right, um. Let's see, Memorial Day, you don't tell everybody Happy Memorial Day because, uh, we're out till then. Uh, then they could have a celebration, talk about that. Bogofliya Hall for the veterans. Uh, so that they're coming up. Uh, remind everybody to shop local, uh, visit our farmers markets on Wednesday, it's Trailhead. And Saturday, it's right, I know it's right here. Uh, Scott Wallace, it's new owner with the, uh. Marshall Food Bank and they're looking for a new director. Uh, I'm sure you'd be slightly missed. The April stats, it's that the average is for April 25, they had 75 daily households, 92 daily boxes total. Uh, for April, uh, was 1,135 households. 1,350 boxes. New households, 47. Uh, comparing the average for that, 71 daily households, 95 daily boxes. So. Their numbers are going up, always. North Shore Food Bank's 23rd Annual Golf Tournament sponsored by Bull Corp will take place Tuesday, May 13th at BoShed. Contact Connie Landrum. If interested in playing at seaLandrum@NorthShoreFoodBank.org. Uh, food, they, food donations are always needed. Uh, especially with, uh, there's been kind of a halt from the USDA in their donation. So they are really hurting. Uh, so everybody, please do food drive, something, you know, whether it's neighborhood, businesses, wherever, it's, it'd be greatly appreciated. Uh, they're, they're down almost 26% in their, in their donations. So that's not a good thing. Uh, they said they, and they expected to get worse before it gets better. So, uh, May's most needed items, so there are apple sauce, canned spinach. Carrots. Canned chicken, cereal, dry beans. And my last thing that I wanna say, since, uh, this is our May meeting, and so I wanna wish. Mr. Ed Rutgers, his happy birthday on May 20th.
Uh-oh.
It's gotta be 32 now, I think it's, it's 32. And to enjoy your much needed, much.
All right. Well, as, um, Councilman Lawrence Botford referenced, we have our veterans appreciation reception, uh, Memorial Day celebration. In honor of service and sacrifice, and I'd like to invite all veterans and their families to join us. It's a free Memorial Day lunch, it's a small token of our deep gratitude. It is, uh, put on by the Covenant Heritage Foundation and I will tell you that it is one of the, uh, most well attended and one of the better, it's, it's, I keep saying signature events, how many signature events do we have? We have a few. We have a few. But this one here is near and dear to my heart, it's Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day. It's 11 to 1, it'll be at Bogofliya Hall. It's, um, it's a delicious meal, Coastal, uh, Environmental Services is donating the food. We have Gallagher's Grill again, who donates their wonderful cakes. Crab cakes. Crawfish cakes. Uh, Zoe's Bakery, who does a phenomenal cake and it, it, it's just, it's, it's very gratifying to see our veterans being, uh, recognized on Memorial, and it's all for, you know, Memorial Day. So you can connect with fellow service members, um, and just hang out and have a good time with this. Uh, Councilman Lewis asked that, uh, there'd be a reminder that we need lifeguards for the summer. I think there's still a need for that. If you know anybody, please let them, um, contact the city. That's, that's something that, talking about enjoying, we know what time it's starting to get. We need some lifeguards for the summer. So, with that being said.
And also just let, on that note, Southeastern, I believe is giving free lifeguard.
All right. Administration.
Can I, can I clarify something? So on that point, we did hire some lifeguards and they have finished a training, but were unable to complete it. So we're looking for a solution. It's not that we did not advertise the positions on time. And we did not make the effort, it's because now we're in a position we need to find out.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, and I apologize, I was not, not, you know, clarifying that.
Good deal. All right. Mayor Lawrence Johnson.
Since we have, uh, so much additional time this evening, I thought I would ask the engineer to come up.